Okay, all right, are we recording?
Cool. All right, it is six o'clock, but we do not have anything close to a quorum.
Trish isn't even here.
I know, it's like, this could be a quick meeting.
A non-meeting.
Non-meeting, quick meeting.
Well, while we're waiting, Chief Jewitt, did you get any quotes for that software and hardware that you needed?
Hi Diane, I actually, I did, I forwarded them to you before lunch and then after lunch, I'm not sure if my email's not working or not.
Yeah, I didn't get anything.
All right, I do have them.
Okay.
I will need, while they're on the phone, I'll try to resend them right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Oh, we have somebody coming. All right, we have a phone number just joined, and apparently, we're finding out if you're on the phone and you need to unmute it, star six. All right, the public service announcement is, those who are on the phone, star six will unmute your phone.
All right, thanks.
No problem. Your husband told me not to do that, but.
How do you mute it back?
Probably star six again, I bet.
All right, okay, yeah, the other people who are on the other phone line, so they're coming, joining us shortly.
Okay, it's only been a month, but that's okay.
No, I think that's okay. Go to their calendar, and it's right there, all the information.
I went online, Diane, and it still said the old, old numbers, so that's what I told Charlie and Larry.
Where did you go?
I went to the town website for tonight's meeting, and it said the old number.
No, it doesn't.
I printed it out, yeah, it does, I'm looking at it.
What, where on the town website?
I went to the Board of Selectmen agendas, and when you pull it up, it says, for Monday night's meeting on June 1st, it's this old number, but June 2nd is the new number.
Right on the very first page of the Board of Selectmen says, the public is invited to join using the following Zoom conference call number.
I'm just telling you, I printed out the agenda, and that's what it says.
You printed out the June 1st agenda?
Yeah.
All right, let's do this, since it's 6:03, is Charlie on? No Charlie? All right.
I know.
We have, we have Larry, we have Matt, we need another selectman, anybody want to be one?
I think Charlie, Matt, Charlie's on, he's muted.
I don't think so, everybody's unmuted.
Well, in my screen, it's muted, and it's his phone number.
Star six, Charlie.
All right, somebody else just joined, who just joined?
Okay, I'm here.
Perfect, okay, so I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:04, and the public service announcement is, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of, hold on, I gotta get Lisa in here. She's joining, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing software for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923. Meeting ID number is 904-045-7732. We're using the link provided here, you can find that online. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSSsecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the star of the show, Trish, you want to give us an update, please?
Okay, so actually, what's good is, is really not a lot, I'm going to start out with our numbers. So as of today, we have 4,545 cases of New Hampshire residents, that's up 259 since last Thursday, that's the last time we spoke, well, we spoke Wednesday night. Out of that, we've got an additional 2,940 recovered in New Hampshire, that's up by 249, which is great. And unfortunately, since last Thursday, we've got plus 19 deaths, giving us a total of 242 New Hampshire residents. There's been a lot of talk and clarification on health and fitness, so it, you know, for a change, we're not talking about campgrounds. And it says to clarify the guidance on health and fitness, gyms are only allowed to open for scheduled classes or individual trainings. Unscheduled activities cannot take place, and they explain that means you can't go in and exercise in the gym. You have to be participating in a scheduled class or meeting with a personal trainer. They talked about churches, they're, they have a church, this one particular town, that's hoping to do an outdoor service. And there are restrictions on number of attendees, they're asking, can they sing or not sing? And the answer is, the reopening task force has guidance on the website, and to try to get a clearer answer, they believe singing could be a problem because of the droplets that could come out, unless obviously, if they're wearing a mask. But they're getting back to us with an explanation on that. Again, they talked about the group training that can occur, and again, it can be only a scheduled event. They talked about, they have to maintain six-foot distancing at beaches, and if that's the case, how are they controlling kids that are going to be running around? And their answer was, reach out to the Attorney General's office, and they'll help you navigate how to handle the reopening of the beach. They also said Primex will assist with that, and that has given out some information. They talked about a transition out of the old mask request process to the new process, so they're working on that within the EOC. So there's different things that we have to do when we're requesting masks to be supplied. We have 23 first responders that have tested positive for COVID-19, 23 are being tracked, seven of them are fire, 16 police, and there's 49 members still in alternative housing. There was a lot of talk by the Joint Information Command Center on what's going on in the online trends. And there's a lot of talk of enforcement of the stay-at-home orders, and the volume of COVID discussion remains about the same. But then they go on to say that on, since the event, let me get back up, since the event in Minneapolis, so there's lighter conversation about COVID-19, and they're thinking it's because of that. There's a lot of talk regarding the opening, and concerns for the homeless, and face masks, which are still an issue. They're concerned because everybody's kind of getting used to where we are, and are becoming more lax in their activities, and maybe not ordering, like the EOCs might not be staying up to date in what's being ordered. They're talking about still stay on top of safety and wellness, to ensure that everyone is staying healthy. One of the other calls was a discussion on solo musicians, and are they allowed within the dining area, and as long as they are six feet away from tables? They additionally said small bands are allowed, as long as they're outside, and the dining area is six feet away from each other, and six feet away from the tables. A question arose about what is the meaning of the Emergency Order 40 relative to dining establishment restrictions, which states, no catering or large group functions shall be allowed. They said, please keep in mind that the Emergency Order does apply to dining establishments, so restaurants must continue to prohibit gatherings of 10 or more people. They did say that, however, the dining restrictions limit the table sizes to six per table, restaurants must ensure that each customer has a table seat to sit in while at the establishment. During Phase 1, the dining guidelines do not permit establishments to open spaces for customers to dance and mingle away from their seats, as social distancing then cannot be maintained. There was also talk about fireworks, at this time, they are permitted, provided people stay in their car for any kind of a firework demonstration. They are going to be giving us more guidance on that relative to any kind of municipal event. Let me turn the page here. They talked about, again, fitness facilities must be limited to no more than 10 people per class, and they're saying that includes the instructor. Multiple classes of 10 or more, 10 or less may be scheduled at the same time, provided they are either outdoors or in separate rooms inside the facility, as long as they don't go over the guidelines. Another town asked if the Governor is intended to extend the stay-at-home order for two or more weeks, and if he's doing that, how are we going to proceed with businesses open, opening? He went on to say, this particular town, that it's a little difficult when the Governor makes changes late in the afternoon or Friday, on a Friday, and then says, effective immediately, not allowing the times, much time to respond. And in this particular case, I think they were actually talking about the churches. So they are going to let the Governor know that a Friday afternoon call at 3:00 doesn't give municipalities much time to respond to whatever the new changes will be. Another town asked about weddings, and the question was, are they still on hold? We have people in town wondering if they can proceed, and they went on to say that they were going to speak with the task force, because the head of the task force was actually not on the call, but reminded them, since we have dining and social distancing guidance, that, that may limit what weddings actually can do regarding dancing and socializing, but they are going to get back to us on that. Another town wanted to know about further information in terms of travel restrictions at the state level, and their answer was, we're not aware of any guidance in terms of new travel restrictions. And then that same town said, I thought there was a requirement that retailers have to require employees to wear masks, and their answer was, there is not a mask requirement, it's only recommended. Okay, let me turn the page. There was talk with another town about pool bathhouses, and, you know, they have to have half-capacity rule like health and fitness centers, and the answer is, they don't have to follow that, but it is the best practice. And then another town said, if the stay-at-home order is extended, how can we expect people to stay home? We got, excuse me, and he went on to say, if you're supposed to stay home, yet we're opening more businesses, isn't it a little convoluted, we're confusing the public? And then he went on to say, regarding school facilities and fields, we need to utilize the schools' facilities for day camps and youth sports, can we do that? And the answer was, schools are only closed in terms of classes, the buildings and the ground can still be used. All right, the next call, Emergency Order Number 49, so this was this morning, the stay-at-home call, the stay-at-home order has now been extended until June 15th, you probably already heard that. They talked about Hampton Beach will be open for recreation today, along with other approved sectors of businesses. They said lodging will open on Friday, and day camps can open on June 22nd. They also want us to know, Department of Health launched a new COVID-19 dashboard to help the public track the impact of COVID-19 in New Hampshire. They reminded us that we were getting another shipment of PPEs today in Manchester, and military would be assisting with that, and they're working on the logistics with FEMA to bring in more support. And, my last page, isn't that exciting? Twenty-five, as of today, 25 first responders tested positive, 36 first responders are being tracked as quarantined, 16 fire, 19 police, and one EMS, and 59 members are in Tier 1 alternative housing. Out of that, six of them are first responders, and 53 are healthcare people. And then Fish and Game, they, they had an input from Fish and Game and said, the dive team had two deployments, and made three drowning recoveries, a six-year-old in Rawlinsford at Salmon Falls, and two adults in the Merrimack River at Canterbury. Officers also responded to three wilderness search and rescue calls, unfortunately, one hiking fatality in Sandwich, a 40-year-old female from Massachusetts, one injured hiker in Franconia, also a Massachusetts resident, makes you wonder how they come in here, right? And three lost in Franconia, unknown residency. Officers also responded to four OHRV crashes, all with serious bodily injury, one from Derry, a Massachusetts resident, Fremont, and Merrimack. Oops, and then the military said, they.
Call from.
Sorry, military.
This time of night, it's a telemarketer, don't worry about it.
Oh, no, really. The military will be monitoring the civil arrest unrest in the country, and develop plans to respond if necessary, should it be required in New Hampshire. And lastly, the online trends, again, lighter conversations about COVID, and more conversations about the national protest. And lastly, Larry just wanted to let you know, and as far as an update, we rest, or he restocked Town Hall for items that Mary Jo, Kim, Cheryl, and Nancy wanted, and also the lifeguard. We've been working with the lifeguards, and they'll be picking up what they need for this weekend, they're picking it up Wednesday at 10:30, and that brings me to the end.
Cool, thank you, thank you. The, some, something I wanted to segue into is, given that these updates are becoming, there's more stuff opening, less stuff closing, do we want to maybe reduce these meetings, COVID meetings, to maybe be once a week? What's everybody think about that?
We could.
Could, which day would we want to do it? Trish, which, which day do you think would make sense in terms of information flow?
Well, Larry, do you think like in the middle of the week, maybe a Wednesday, that way we can do a recap of the weekend? What do you think?
Yeah, I think Wednesday would be good, and if anything came up as an emergency, we can just call everybody and have a short one.
Yeah, true. So is everybody cool with that? So we'll, we'll limit it to Wednesdays for now, and just see what happens. We're having less stuff to act upon, less urgent stuff to act upon, so as Larry said, if all of a sudden we get hit with a bunch of stuff, we can all get together, the law allows for that in an emergency, so. So congratulations on your final Monday meeting on this. All right, so I think the next thing I had on the agenda was for Pete at the transfer station, Pete, did you have something for us?
I believe it's in regards to the swap pile.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I, I, that's not something I brought up, though, something if I was asked if I wanted to talk about it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my, my thoughts are, no, we're not going to open it right now.
Okay, I, I agree with that, what's the rest of the board thing? I don't see how we could mitigate the swap pile.
I don't think we have the room to store things, to give them a chance to decontaminate before we put them out, and if you open the area, you're going to have people going in there, putting stuff in there, and you're going to have to grab it, or, you know, turn them away. It, it, it's a problem, too small an area.
Lisa, what's it like at the town beach?
It's cool.
Are you getting a lifeguard shift in now, is that what you're doing?
Well, I like to pretend anyways.
Yeah, so yeah, I would agree with that, everybody else, Larry and Charlie and Kate, what do you think?
I agree.
Yeah.
So Pete, I guess you're telling the residents if they bring it up, which they have been to Pete every now and then, basically tell them, we don't see a way that we can mitigate risk in provided, it's not forever, right? I think we learned that with, with the beach, right? It's not forever, so it's just until further notice, if we can, if we can figure out a way to do it, I think we'll vote to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Well, it should depend on how our numbers go down and down.
Yeah.
If our numbers go down to zero, and you know, why not start it back up again, but if they continue.
Yeah, and to me, it's all about the public's interest, because I think we saw that they were interested in the beach opening right away, so if, if all of a sudden we have 50 people show up at a meeting saying they want the swap pile open, maybe we can talk about it, so.
Yeah, but I also see that the residents are able to take anything that they want to put out to the swap pile, out on their front lawn, and it disappears.
Yeah, the, Pete, if you don't know this, there's a Facebook page, I'm not on it, my wife is, it's called the Swap Shop, are you guys on that one?
No.
So it's, it's, I think it's called the Newton Swap Shop, so what'll happen is, you can put a picture of what you have on it, say it's out front, come and get it. So it's kind of like the virtual version of the swap pile. So, not, not that that's our job to direct people to that, but maybe, maybe Pete, if, to appease people, you can tell them about the swap shop. Now Kate's at the, the Seacoast Beach, which one is that, is that?
It's a pretend beach.
Okay, the clouds, the clouds aren't moving, so.
It's the beach I'd like to be at.
Right, right. All right, anything else?
Um, is.
Matt.
Your Zoom account?
Oh yeah, Charlie, go ahead.
Matt, should we be discussing the, the prices for that stuff that Trish was looking at for the Town Hall? Yes, no?
I, I think they were going to meet Tuesday and talk to us Wednesday, is that still the plan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, cool.
Okay, okay, just curious.
Awesome, and then, this Zoom account we've been using is my account, so what I'm wondering is if we want to invest, it's right around $15 a month, we could have a town Zoom account that Diane could let the secretary, other secretaries use, so the planning board could use Zoom, ZBA, so on and so forth, it'd be like booking a room, really, so we wouldn't overlap, we typically don't overlap in our rooms, we wouldn't overlap in Zoom, so does everybody think that's worth spending for just the near term, 15 bucks a month?
Absolutely.
I do.
Although I would like to see the other two selectmen's faces show up on Zoom.
If I learn how to do it, I'll do it.
We can show you how, right Diane?
Yep, piece of cake, click on the link.
We have a whole.
First you have to turn your PC on.
So. So Diane, I think you have your okay to go do that.
Right.
And then I don't know how, the best way to manage it with the other folks, but I don't know. But I know that some members of the other boards have, like tonight, we're going to do recreation on somebody else's Zoom account, so I know recreation has been using Zoom, I don't know about everybody else, so.
I think they've been using the free conference calling stuff.
Which.
Would be the Planning Board, I believe, right, and Board of Appeals?
Yeah, they might want to use it, and I don't know about conservation.
Probably not. But. Planning Board, I don't know, I'll.
Possibly, because it would allow them to share a screen, share documents, you know, so that people can see it, that is a plus to it.
But I don't think they have, I don't know what they have for hardware at home, the members of these boards.
Yeah, my, my thing is, a selling point is the phone line, as I think our, our two camera-shy selectmen will tell us, the phone number is much better in terms of the delay, like there's not the same, that free conference call, that delay is ridiculous on there. But I don't think there's, I, I think it's worth it for the phone line, you know?
Matt, I do have a question, when you, when you opened your account, did it require a credit card?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so Nancy, I'll be putting on the town credit card.
Is that a month, monthly payment, or?
Yes.
And that'll come from the general government, right?
Well, initially, no, let's submit it to COVID while we can.
Yeah.
Agreed. We, we're only doing it because of COVID, so it is a COVID expense.
Right.
Yep.
All right, and then, so that'll be good, that'll take care of that, and Kate's like at the farm over here, so I don't know what's going on, maybe we should lock out that feature, so I don't get.
I do have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Just, Trish, you're right, I see the error of my ways on the agenda, it was the old information, I apologize.
No, no, don't be silly, I, I thought one more time, I was screwing it up.
Okay, I, I see what I did, I used an old one and just tweaked it and forgot about the updating the Zoom stuff, sorry about that.
No problem, hon.
Okay.
I do have a question for Chief Jewitt, since this was the first weekend with the reopen beach, was there anything in your logs or anything like that of interest to us based on the beach?
I didn't see anything that was, you know, alarming, everything seemed to be, you know, status quo as far as the town beaches. I'm, I'm not even sure if I even saw a log entry for it.
Okay, good.
So I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we had any issues.
That's a good sign. Something I will tell you guys now, I'm going to have more detail on tomorrow night, is the rec meeting's at 7:00. We are going to get the beach sand delivered this week. So what's going to have to happen is, we might have to put a public service announcement out there that, you know, there's going to be a little of an, a little bit of an inconvenience with the sand there, but I was going to do this whole deal tomorrow night, but I'll explain it now, before somebody gets on social media and says, why didn't they do this while the beach was closed? All I can say is, we weren't doing any work in town for a couple of months, and we didn't think the beach would open, you know, this year, so I thought the beach was going to open June 8th, we're talking June 11th. We're talking June eighth for, uh, the beach open. So at any rate, if people don't want sand, we won't get the sand. But if they want sand, they're going to need just a, we're going to need a window there where people can still go to the beach. But they're just going to have to be inconvenienced a little bit, so.
Okay.
Just so everybody's aware. More info tomorrow night, once we get it worked out tonight, so.
So Matt, I have one thing.
Sure.
Um, I got a request today to allow more hours for the planning board administrator to be able to prepare for some. Um, hearings, applications coming in and hearings coming up.
But Nancy, let me stop you, it's not more hours.
No, no more hours, just more in the Town Hall time.
So more access.
Yes, correct. So my thought was, um, I think currently he's going in on Monday nights from six to eight. My thought was Monday and Thursday nights from six to eight or six to nine, if he needs the additional. Time there rather than at home. Um, and he wanted to know, uh, because I told him, uh, in my email today. That no one else is allowed in the building or in the planning board office. He's the only one that's authorized if the board approves. But he said he's having a little bit of trouble with his printer and his scanner. He wanted to know if he could use the kitchen scanner. He said he'd be willing to wipe it all down. I kind of told him that he could go in and get his mail and go out the side door, don't go through the building. But now he's requesting, if he can't get his printer to scan, can he use the kitchen machine? Which means he now has to come downstairs. Nobody else would be in the Town Hall. He said he would wipe everything down, but just ask him what the board thinks.
I have a question, Matt.
Trish?
So here's a quick question, and maybe Nancy can answer this, or Diane. Um, we used to share the, the conservation printer that's up in the conservation room with planning board. Does that not have scanning capabilities?
Um, I don't know, that, that's a very old machine, and I'm not sure it even has a maintenance agreement anymore because it is so old.
And Jim, Jim does have a machine in his office, but he said he was having an issue.
I don't know if it's a simple thing to fix or if it's something that's wrong with the machine. I don't know, I just heard about it today.
Okay.
Matt, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I think we really, as, as the board, we need to start looking at when we're going to start opening. Because we're into June now, are we going to go to July and August? I know some Town Halls are open.
Yeah, and I know we have a task force that's, uh, coming up with something. Have we gotten a status report on that yet from them? What they've come up with?
They only meet once a week, and they didn't meet last week.
Yeah, we meet tomorrow at two.
So Lisa, Lisa, you missed the last meeting. So, uh, they're meeting tomorrow. On Wednesday, we're going to get a, an update because they do want to, uh, buy some stuff. So we're just going to get, before we write the check, we want to just get an update. So that's supposed to come tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
But the, uh. Charlie?
No, you, you go ahead, and then I'll get in.
All I was going to say is kind of an answer to, to Larry's question. Where, what are people thinking right now? Because I personally am not in a hurry to open the Town Hall to the public. Because I think, uh. Quite obviously, the town told us what they thought about the beach. I don't get the sense that the town is banging on the door. In wanting the public access to the Town Hall. I could be wrong about that, but what are other people thinking?
Matt, it's coming.
Yeah.
When it comes to. When it comes to access to Town Hall. Based on the narrow hallway. And the close quarters of the offices, we would only be able to have one, um, resident. Come in at any particular moment in time, one person in the building at a time. Down on that floor. Everybody else would have to wait outside. And you would have to have them come in through one door and out the other door.
That's what the task force is working on.
That's right, that's what I was just going to say, that's what the task force is working on. And believe me, I'm for opening up, but I want to open up slowly. I think what we should do is not make any decisions until after the task force.
Sure.
On Wednesday night.
And I think we need the input from, um, Mary Jo too. Since hers would probably be the first, um, public access office to open.
Right.
And I think I was saying indoor air quality is much more problematic than beaches.
The, um. Says somebody who's at the beach right now, so.
And in a month's time, we're going to know so much more how the reopening is going, so I don't think we need to rush this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of not, not, um. Thinking we need to rush this, but as far as what's on the table with Jim Doggett. I, I don't have a problem with them having extended access now. It's not like we're letting the public in, you know what I mean? This is an employee is going to have, he understands where he needs to go and what he needs to disinfect on his way out. So what are people thinking?
Would he wear a mask down there?
Yes.
When he's the only person in the building?
He wouldn't in his office, but he said he would when he goes downstairs.
How do you feel about it, Nancy? I mean, you're the one who's there more.
Well, I'm not there that much. It's, uh, I, my whole thing, I agree with Matt that, um, they, everybody shouldn't be in the building at the same time. So I've told Jim, he needs to be there in the evening after the girls have gone home. Um, you know, and he's fine with that because there's a lot he can do at home. I even suggested that maybe speak to the planning board about getting a laptop. So he doesn't have, he's working off that old, um, tablet that you guys had years ago. And he can't VPN and he can't do anything with that. So I suggested he speak to the planning board and possibly get a small laptop that he can work with and, and be able to take back and forth. So he could VPN in, he wouldn't have to be in as much. But if he's preparing, um, applications and, and getting things ready for a public hearing, I think he needs to be there where all his documents are. Because he's not comfortable, he doesn't want to take anything home.
And Tricia, wouldn't that also be covered under a COVID expense?
The laptop?
Yeah, the laptop.
Did she go away?
I don't know, Tricia.
I think Larry just.
No, I don't think, I don't think the laptop would be covered, somebody else tried doing that. And, uh, they said no.
Okay. I, um, I think, what are we, what are we looking at for a laptop? Eight hundred?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking. I, I don't know, Diane would know better if we could get something. I don't think he needs all the whistles and bells on it, but.
So to the planning board, it's going to come out of there.
Right.
I thought if he comes in, if we say, yeah, he can come in now, it's, then he won't need it. But he's coming in because he doesn't have it, right?
Well, he works from home and he's working off a tablet. And he doesn't have a phone that he can use at home, the, the cell phone he's using, he doesn't have good service. And, and his home phone doesn't have long distance. So he tries to go in and make calls and stuff at the Town Hall, so he's not footing the bill.
And I, I think the biggest thing for that role is the printing. So there's, there's a lot of printing to do. Scanning and all that stuff. So that's why, that's why, I guess, we have to have the increased access and, and. I would even go so far as to say, if we do a staged, or not a staged, a phased reopening. This is kind of an early phase, right?
There you go.
More employees with access.
Agreed.
So I.
That's the road I'm going, Matt.
Okay. So Nancy, go ahead, Charlie.
Matt, I, I don't have a problem with him going in there. I don't think we should be buying any more equipment, but I, I, I don't have any problem with him going in there and doing his work. To make sure that it's done properly, that we don't get sued by any developer.
Yeah, oh, that would never happen, I say it just.
Sure, I, I understand.
So, so Nancy, I think you have your marching orders. The, you know, the laptop is an idea for the planning board to kick around, but, you know, I think. I think you just get them in there in the best possible window where he's not going to be running into others. And we should be good, so.
So are you interested in him going in any daytimes, or would you prefer just the evenings for now? Because that, you know.
Diane waving her hand.
So here's my opinion, he stays up there most of the time. I think you're restricting and tying his hands, and he's not able to do his job correctly. I would recommend that you let him go in, in the afternoon and stay in the evening. Um, he, like I said, he doesn't go down there often, once his printer is working, he should be fine.
Yeah.
I agree.
When Mary Jo.
I agree. Happened.
Is Mary Jo okay with this?
He's not going to go downstairs.
Okay, I just wasn't saying, when you said after, because as long as he doesn't.
Right. On the second floor, there's no reason for him not to go in when he needs to and get all his work done.
First light, it's just the printing, he'd have to go down, so as long as.
No, he won't, we'll get it fixed so that he has his own printer upstairs, both color and a big copier. And it'll, should be able, and it just needs to be fixed.
And it's not just access to a printer, Kate. There's also access to plans and milars and.
That's fine, just remember it's the overlap of people down, when he has to go downstairs, when other people are there.
Right.
They're not as comfortable.
And stay, you know, stay in your office and do what he has to do.
Well, he won't have to use the kitchen copier if their scanning works on his printer upstairs. We have maintenance, so we can always call the company to come in, check it, or I'm on, or whoever is in charge of it.
Exactly.
He could also announce himself if he's coming down, you know? Like he could, he could say, he could call their office, say, I have a mask on, but I'm coming down, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Our new normal is fast approaching, and this might be things we need to do, so.
Yep. Okay.
All right, anything else for tonight's meeting? All right, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right, so Lisa with Charlie second, we're all in favor of that. But we'll see everybody Tuesday night at six will be the non-public, so. Be there or be.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
See you guys, bye.
Good night.